From Ward 15, Councilwoman Colso Peñ, Oscar Vargas. From Ward 13, Counselor Rachel Miller. From Ward 10, Councilman Pedro Esquinari. From Ward 2, Councilwoman Helen Diakonti. From Ward 12, Councilwoman-elect Althea Graves. From Ward 7, Councilwoman-elect Anna Vargas. From Ward 14, Councilwoman-elect Shelley Peterson. From Ward 5, Councilwoman Joan Ryan. From Ward 1, Councilman John Benhouse. From Ward 6, Councilwoman-elect Miguel Sanchez. From Ward 8, Councilman James Taylor. From Ward 4, Councilwoman-elect Justin Royas. From Ward 3, Councilwoman-elect Sue Underboy. From Ward 9, Councilwoman-elect Juan Pichardo. From Ward 11, Presiding Officer, Councilwoman Mary King Harris.
I call the January 2nd, 2023, 2023, uh, Department of Section, Councilwoman. Madam Clerk, roll call for us.
Presiding Officer, Councilwoman Harris.
Present.
Counselor-elect Andrew Boa.
Present.
Councilwoman Anthony.
Present.
Councilman Espinol.
Present.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilwoman-elect Graves.
Present.
Counselor Miller. Councilwoman-elect Peterson.
Present.
Counselor-elect Pichardo.
Present.
Counselor-elect Royas. Councilwoman Ryan.
Present.
Counselor-elect Sanchez. Councilman Taylor.
Present.
Councilwoman-elect Vargas. Councilman Vargas. You have 15 present and none absent, you have four.
The invocation is given by Rochelle Lee. May your all stand, please.
Today, we come together to celebrate a new year. Today, we come together to celebrate a new year in the swearing-in of city council members. They will each take an oath of public service to protect and promote the interests of all who know this city as home, a workplace, or a destination. Today's ceremony is brightened by a long-awaited milestone many thought would not come this soon. Our 15 council members are from the ranks of nearly four generations, a diversity of cultures, spoken first languages, race, national origins, lived experience, and gender identity. For only the third time in the council's history, this body will be led by a woman, a woman with extraordinary talent, who leads with an abundance of grassroots skills. For the first time, the council will also be led by a queer woman. As a city, we are blessed to have such a diversity of perspectives and talents to govern a people's house. With your swearing-in today, you stand on the shoulders of numerous exemplary council members. There are many to emulate, but I will mention one in particular, Councilman Miguel Vala. Some of whom you know and admire. If Miguel were here today, I know he would say, "A servant leader understands and embraces shared ideals, collective responsibility, teamwork, inclusion, and fairness." He would insist that as elected officials, your success rests in the pursuit of truth, that you must instinctively rebut the destructive reach of economic inequality, social injustices, and disregard completely apathy and disinterest for those who are less fortunate. Miguel would also tell you to use your power to give voice to those who might only speak in whispers. So, as you go about your work, consider the words of Angela Davis, an award-winning scholar and heroic fighter for human rights. She once said, "I am no longer accepting things I cannot change. I am changing things I cannot accept." These words are the seeds of faith, faith in our human capacity to change the world for the better. So grow your faith and your collective willpower to be the agents of change you desperately need right now. As a council, you will ponder numerous issues that impact our social and environmental wellness. Do not shy away from its daunting nature, because these are challenges that only worsen with the left. Kicking the can down the road is no longer an option.
That's right.
Today, tomorrow, or the days after. As officials managing the affairs of our city, hesitate not to ask questions and challenge premises and promises which too often obscure the persistent and dangerous economic divide between the haves and the have-nots. As our voices in government, know we are coming on you not to turn a blind eye to those experiencing hardship or in despair, because a just society leaves no one behind. Treat all you meet as equally important as your neighbors, your local constituents, and particular partners. If you do, you will flourish as neighbors. As you execute your duties here, seek to engage those who are helping others. Their work will lessen the weight on your shoulders. Remember, the issues and tasks before you are the people's business. Choose to work in accordance with others who care about our city, particularly those who show up when there's no incentives on the table. As city councilors, your decisions must be informed by a breadth of ideas and proven efforts which expand and deepen the reach of Providence's growing prosperity. And remember to cherish each day with a sense of hope, joy, purpose, and promise. The responsibilities of your councilwork can be merciless on your family, family relations, your friendships, your spirits, your good health. With 15 diverse neighborhoods calling upon this council, our destiny and identity as a thriving city is in your hands. Your success is our success. We need you each to love and care for us and for one another, just as if we were the faces in your circle of supporters. As you will soon take oath to faithfully represent the people of Providence, please accept our thanks for wanting to do this work. In conclusion, let us acknowledge that the city of Providence stands on the traditional lands of America's nation and the lands of people. With profound respect, we acknowledge the enduring relationship between Rhode Island's indigenous peoples and this land. For generations, indigenous peoples have been the stewards of the land we occupy, the ocean, and the entire world. We are here today because of the history and present traditions of Rhode Island's indigenous nations. So continue to render your fellowship and support to uplift their long, long struggle for justice, tribal independence, and economic empowerment. Again, my best wishes to the council and the leadership team, and I'll say thanks for each member who one of them in your service.
Please remain standing. The Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America will be led by Council-elect Miguel Sanchez.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the glory for which it stands, to the nation, to our God, and to the people, and to the justice for all.
You may proceed. Thank you. Madam Clerk, please read item soon into the record.
Certificates of election of members of the City Council, item number two. Certificates of election from the Board of Cameriers certifying the election of the members of the City Council for the city of Providence for the ensuing term of four years, ending on the first Monday in January 2027. Councilman John Benzalas, Ward 1. Councilwoman Helen Anthony, Ward 2. Counselor-elect Sue R. Andrew Boa, Ward 3. Counselor-elect Justin M. Royas, Ward 4. Councilwoman Joan Anne Ryan, Ward 5. Counselor-elect Miguel A. Sanchez, Ward 6. Councilwoman-elect Anna S. Vargas, Ward 7. Councilman James E. Taylor, Ward 8. Counselor-elect Juan Pichardo, Ward 9. Councilman Pedro J. Espinal, Ward 10. Councilwoman Mary K. Harris, Ward 11. Councilwoman-elect Althea A. Graves, Ward 12. Counselor Rachel M. Miller, Ward 13. Councilwoman-elect Shelley T. Peterson, Ward 14. Councilman Oscar O. Vargas, Ward 15.
Please see. Madam Clerk, please read item soon into the record.
Item 3, Oath of Office of Members of the City Council administered by the Honorable John E. Martin Mallory, Judge of the Proving Court.
Good afternoon. I would ask all council persons to rise at their stations. And I would ask that you all repeat after me after you raise your right hand and say your name. I.
Mary K. Harris.
Do solemnly swear.
Sowfully swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
And uphold the Constitution.
And uphold the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
The United States of America.
The State of Rhode Island.
The State of Rhode Island.
And all laws thereof.
And all laws thereof.
And the city of Providence.
The city of Providence.
Home rule charter.
Home rule charter.
And all city ordinances.
And all city ordinances.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And honestly.
And honestly.
Discharge.
Discharge.
The duties of member.
The duties of member.
Of the City Council.
Of the City Council.
Of said city.
Of said city.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations all.
Madam Clerk, please read item 3 into the record. I'm sorry, item 4.
Item 4 is election of President of the City Council.
Nominations are now are in order for election President of the City Council.
Madam Chair, I would like to nominate.
Wait, 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 sir. I'm sorry, Councilwoman. I'm getting ready to ask you a question. Are there any nominations for President of the City Council?
I would like to nominate Councilwoman Rachel Miller.
Is there a second?
President of the City Council.
Madam Chair, I'd like to second that motion.
A motion has been made by Councilman Taylor to nominate Councilwoman Miller as President of the City Council, seconded by Councilman Gonzalez. Is there a counter? Are there counter nominations? Are there a counter nomination? Are there a counter nomination? If there's no further nominations, then I declare that all nominations be closed. And clerk is hereby directed to place one ballot in the name of Rachel Miller. Therefore, I declare as Presiding Officer that Rachel Miller is hereby declared President of the Providence City Council. Madam Clerk, please read item 5 into the record.
Item 5 is oath of office of Council President administered by Judge John E. Martin Mallory.
Councilwoman, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the State of Rhode Island.
And the State of Rhode Island.
And the Providence Home Rule Charter.
And the Providence Home Rule Charter.
And all city ordinances.
And all city ordinances.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me.
Congratulations, Council President Miller.
Madam Clerk, please read item 6 into the record.
Item number six is election of President Protemore of the City Council.
Nominations are now in order for election for President Protemore of the Providence City Council. Are there any nominations for President Protemore of the City Council?
Madam President.
Madam Clerk.
I would like to nominate Councilman Juan M. Pichardo as President Protemore of the City Council.
Second, Mr. President. I'm going to have to wait. Nomination three, Madam Clerk, seconded by Deputy Majority Leader Emma Harris. Are there any counter-nominations? Are there any counter-nominations? Are there any counter-nominations? If there are no further nominations, then I declare that all nominations be closed, and the clerk is hereby directed to place one ballot in the name of Councilman Juan Pichardo. Therefore, I declare Council President that Councilman Juan Pichardo is hereby called President Protemore of the Providence City Council. Madam Clerk, please read item 7 into the record.
Item 7 is oath of office of Council President Protemore administered by Judge John E. Martin Mallory.
I.
I.
Juan Pichardo.
Juan Pichardo.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and uphold.
That I will support and uphold.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
Constitution, United States of America.
The State of Rhode Island.
State of Rhode Island.
And all laws thereof.
And all laws thereof.
And the city of Providence Home Rule Charter.
And the city of Providence Home Rule Charter.
And all city ordinances.
All city ordinances.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And honestly.
And honestly.
Discharge the members.
Discharge the members.
The duties of the members.
The duties of the members.
Of the City Council.
Of the City Council.
Of said Providence.
Said Providence.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Madam Clerk, please read item 8 into the record.
Item 8 is appointment of members of the City Council as police constables administered by Dilling Tomrey, Chairman and Secretary of the Board of Licenses.
If all councils will be ready to rise, raise your hand. I.
I.
Stand. Do solemnly swear.
Sowfully swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Rhode Island.
And of the State of Rhode Island.
And the Providence Home Rule Charter.
And the Providence Home Rule Charter.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of City Constable to the best of my ability.
Of the office of City Constable to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Madam Clerk, please read item 9 into the record.
Item 9 is election of City Clerk.
Nominations are now in order for election for City Clerk for the Providence City Council. Are there any nominations for City Clerk for the City Council?
Madam President, I would like to nominate Tina Mastriani as City Clerk for Providence City Council.
Second, Madam President. Nomination has been made by Majority Leader Taylor and seconded by Deputy Majority Leader Emma Harris. Are there any counter-nominations? Are there any counter-nominations?
Excuse me, I don't have a nomination. I really don't. I just question the transmutation of the.
Councilwoman, we are now taking nominations for Clerk of the City Council. Are there any counter-nominations? Are there any counter-nominations? Are there any counter-nominations? If there are no further nominations, then I declare that all nominations be closed, and the clerk is hereby directed to place one ballot in the name of Tina Mastriani. Therefore, I declare as Council President that Tina Mastriani is hereby declared City Clerk of the Providence City Council. Madam Clerk, please read item 10 into the record.
Oath of Office of City Clerk administered by Council President.
Oath of office of City Clerk administered by Council President.
Do solemnly swear do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and of the State of Rhode Island
and of the State of Rhode Island.
and the Providence Home Rule Charter
and the Providence Home Rule Charter.
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of City Clerk
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of City Clerk
to the best of my ability.
to the best of my ability. Congratulations to the newly sworn members of the Providence City Council. We are the stewards of our city government and together we're turning a new page in the 199-plus year history of our city. We are the most diverse council in the history of Providence. Well represented the vitality of our neighborhoods. We are lifelong Providence residents and newer community members who have made the city our home in recent decades. Our council includes immigrants from Guatemala, the Dominican Republic, and
Yes!
Our families trace their roots to Indigenous Peoples Cape Verde, Eastern Europe, Portugal, England and Scotland, Mexico, Australia, Ireland, Ukraine, and countries in Africa. For the first time, a majority of council members are people of color. And for the second time, women make up a majority. We are the youngest council in many years, although I did not, you know, check IDs at the door. If not ever. And for the first time, Providence has elected an open number of LGBTQ community as President of this council. As a queer woman, that is an honor I do not take lightly. I want to thank each of you for your confidence in my leadership as we chart this new path for our city. And you know, our diversity is a great strength to the city. Representation matters for so many reasons. But as we are here together right now, let's pledge to one another that we'll use this opportunity to bring the many voices of our communities into the decisions we'll make here together. Decisions that will have a deep impact on our city and on future generations. We have an opportunity to link collaboratively with one another, with residents and businesses in our neighborhoods, to let differences in opinion strengthen our decisions and to be a beacon of integrity and transparency in our decision-making. And we have big decisions coming our way, from stewarding the city's next 10-year comprehensive plan for land use and zoning, to shepherding the return of our public schools to local control, to passing the city budget annually and ensuring that that budget reflects our values and priorities. Providence is an incredible city with a vital culture and core strengths. Each of us is already an advocate for our neighborhood, from Little League to cultural events, food drives, neighborhood cleanups, restaurant openings, school plays, cheering out the teams at the rec center, I could go on, right? And over the next four years, we'll have many opportunities to celebrate and cheer Providence on together. This council will put equity at the forefront. And we will see that as we do our work together to address issues of affordability, public safety, the quality of our schools and the state of our school buildings, and ensuring equitable access to city services. You know, the council evolves with each generation and with each election. And many of us are just getting to know each other. But I know from conversations with all of you that as we look ahead to the work before us, each of us wants to ensure that this is a group that will engage one another in good faith and with the best intentions, even as we debate matters of the utmost importance, which we will surely view from different perspectives from time to time. And of course, we ask nothing less from all of you who are gathered here today to support your family, your friends, your loved ones, and from everybody across our shrouded area city. Love recognizes no barriers. It jumps hurdles, leaves fences, cinderjacks, walls to arrive at its destination full of hope. Those words from my Angela come to mind when I think of the work ahead of us. I am filled with optimism and belief in our work together to jump any hurdles before us. So let's engage in good faith. Let's recognize that our share of love for our city unites us and let's do all we can to work together to move Providence forward. Thank you and congratulations.
Madam President.
Majority Leader Taylor.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend Rule 2A of the Rules of the City Council to hold all regular city council meetings in the year 2023 at 6:00 PM.
Seconded, Madam President.
Motion made by Majority Leader Taylor, seconded by Deputy Majority Leader Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes. Seeing as there is no further business
Madam President.
Majority Leader.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn in memory of Kevin Gerard and Christopher Patero.
Seconded.
Motion made by Majority Leader Taylor, seconded by Deputy Majority Harris. Let's rise and adjourn in honor. And now council close, an honorary meeting of the Providence City Council.